I have 7:00 PM, Thursday, May 15th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And please be reminded that we're being televised and recorded on Sandwich Community Television. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is a reorganization of this board.
I'd like to make a motion, we appoint Charles Holden as chairman of the select board.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain, so it's 3-0-1. Okay, thank you very much. On the other hand, I would like to continue with Mr. George as the vice chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
3-0-1. Okay, thank you. Thank you. We are reorganized officially. Anybody here for public comment? Yes. Just please make sure that the green light is on and speak into the microphone, please, and state your name and address, of course.
My name's, uh, I'm Dr. Good.
Is there?
Coach Lord Donald, like that, the order. My name's Peter Hartman, I live in a 14-acre garage in St. Pimlico Pond, Missouri. And actually, congratulations on this, uh, project. But I spoke about a woman, and I saw her one time. And I dealt with Leanne Blake, and she was very professional. But I really don't think they understood what I was trying to say. And that could mean, it could mean. And what happened is, so I got a letter, I showed you the letter, from, uh, '94, 4-6-94. In that letter, it said, "We're going to charge you Pimlico Pond, Missouri, fifty dollars, annual fifty, and maintain research, right?" It is fifty bucks, not that much. I was a little angry, I was, "Oh, he is fifty bucks." And then the guy, uh, took it for another ten years. So, at ten, eight, ten, whatever. And then he turned it over to a person in the neighborhood. At that time, they said it was an HOA. So, okay, I didn't have a problem. Every year, I kept giving them the money. But it doesn't matter how much. People would say, "Oh, it's a hundred bucks, or seven, five bucks, it's whatever." And I gave them the money. So, thirty years, uh, 2024. All of a sudden, I go, "I'm going to see what." The president, he's been here twenty years, the dog was ten, and she was there twenty, with the treasure, they were signed. Okay, so then, I go on, and on, and here they, they sent a letter, says, "You can do a lot, if you get everyone together, you can be the HOA that has provided the town to you all this way." Yeah, and paid for it, you know, for the benefit. So, I started looking into it. And so, I said, "You guys, the people that took over, I think you, you tell me, does everybody know what an HOA is?" An HOA, I s- because they don't really tell me, HOA, you know? They told me, they told me, "Let the lawyers handle it." The lawyer. I said, "On a snowy day, we're not the registry of deeds." Because they said, "Well, we're protected by the registry of deeds."
Whoop, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hit that, though. All right, so, they said, I went, snowy day, went down to the Registry of Deeds, and they have like a touchscreen, and I'm touching the screen, and, pf, not, it's not happening, it's not going good. And the lady says to me, "What are you trying to do?" I said, "I'm trying to talk to you." Come on over. So, she goes, and she gets one of the registrars. I didn't ask the guy's name. He says, "To be an HOA, you only need three things. You only need to be, you have to be, have common space. HOA, you have to have common space. You have to have equity. Everyone gets treated the same. And you have to have sustainability, like the people that put the propane tanks off a chase road. If they all got together and said, "Hey, we're going to buy all our fuel from X," and they all got together, and they agreed to do that, that's an HOA. They have to, they all have to stay together in order to get a cheaper value. But these people, they never were an HOA. And I confuse, I think, Lee Ann Drake, and I probably, she confused the town attorney, because the town attorney says, "I got to hire a attorney to prosecute an illegal organization." I go, "What?" They go, "Oh, in order to stop it," because I said their options is be a voluntary HOA. That's your option. Oh, they say, "Oh, no, we can't be that. We, you know, we got sixty people who are paying. They are paying, because they, and we got the Registry of Deeds, you know, they're supporting us." And I just, I just, I, I, I see a crime being committed, and they still, you know, it wasn't like a crime where they robbed the store, or, it was a crime, though. It was a crime. And they said, "Oh, no, no, we're all set." So, I, they, right now, it's two hundred bucks, everyone says to me, "Two hundred bucks a year." It's $135 now, and they're saying another seventy in the fall to take care of, if anyone's been on Pimlico Pond Road and see at the entrances of Pimlico Pond, three entrances. So, the benefit is for six people, not for the whole neighborhood.
Excuse me, but you only get five minutes technically to-
Yeah, yeah, you tell me when I'm done, I'm done, you understand. Are you good?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Everybody else, you guys good? All right, so I'm just asking the town to do something about it, because I pay enough money in taxes, I think. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your point, thank you.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment? Review and approval of minutes. May 1st, 2025.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of May 1st, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's 3-0-1.
Abstention.
Okay, thank you. Town manager report.
Just a few things tonight. Our next meeting is next Thursday night at 7:00. One of the primary topics on there is a update that I know the board's been looking for for a while, so the Visitor Services Board, the Sandwich Chamber, and the Canal Region Chamber are going to come in just to give you an overview of what they've been using the sandwich promotion fund money for, tell a little bit about, you know, what each organization does. And I think especially the Visitor Services Board wants to highlight a couple of thoughts they have on maybe some bigger projects moving forward if, if things work out. If you recall, when the federal bankruptcy proceedings on the so-called Autumn Wood and Highland Passage parcels were taking place, the judge ultimately issued the final orders, and at that point, we were told we could proceed with the acquisition, which we did, and went through all the proper things. There was an appeal filed, and I just wanted to let you know, we found out this morning that that appeal was denied, and it was determined moot and dismissed. So, you know, there's no other, any way legally to try to overturn what was done, so I think things are set, which is great. And I think Heather had a couple updates, too.
Just, just one, just a public announcement about the Cape Cod Commission's regional policy plan. If you recall, they update that every five years. Our commissioner is very thorough in making sure we are aware of everything that's going on with the commission. The town of Sandwich is hosting a meeting to review that on May 19th at 5:30 PM at the Center for Active Living.
That'll be on, on, on the town's website, and?
It is, yes.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. And that's May 19th at 5:30. Okay. Anything else? Any questions for Heather Rabid? Okay. Correspondence statements and announcements, I, I have a few. The school safety committee met on May 8th. Evacuation and recovery drills are planned and scheduled before the end of the school year. May 13th, Sandwich Care is met at the Center for Active Living. Maggie Ward of Be Free Wellness provided an overview of the nonprofit committed to collective healing through awareness, access, and togetherness in a holistic healing and support of trauma recovery, mental health, and personal empowerment. Ms. Ward may be contacted at Maggie@befreewell.org, and they also operate a website, befreewell.org as well. Yesterday, the school, a committee met. The committee reorganized with Kevin Surralt as chair, Danielle Benyenda as vice chair, Tracy Goodwin as secretary. Congratulations. And congratulations as well to Alex Higgins, the new school safety, the new school committee member. There was a fine presentation by the students related to their recent field trip to Finland. Future trips to Italy in April of 2026 and Japan in April of 2027 were approved as presented by the committee. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education approved innovation career pathways in business and finance, as well as healthcare and social assistance as requested by the Sandwich Middle High School. Those are five-year plans, and they are audited as they progress. Then, there was a $5,000 USA Field Hockey Grow the Game Grant application for 2025, which was approved as submitted by Ms. Jamie Hockter. Fine job, Ms. Hockter. And that's, that's all I have, folks. Okay? Okay, thank you. Staff meetings and hearings.
I would love to take you up on the opportunity for statements and correspondence and announcements, if that's acceptable, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you. So, just, just a few items. One is, I just want to thank folks for their support. A lot of folks supported me in, in being elected back here, and I'm very excited to be here. I also wanted to apologize to my colleagues for not showing up for the last three years, except for when I wanted something, so I'll, I'll be here again, so you'll have to deal with me. A couple of other items, I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to bring up. One is, Mr. Hartman, just, just based on your comments, our ability to help you with, with a lot of those issues is limited or non-existent. Very often, when we get involved with those types of HOA issues, which are common with homeowners' associations, unfortunately, it's regarding winter maintenance, and this, this is not a back-and-forth discussion, so I'd be happy to speak with you another time, but I just wanted to respond to, to, to let you know a couple of things, but it's really an offline conversation, and I'd be happy to speak with you about it. But we do see these types of issues, just our ability to engage there, because it's a civil issue, is very, very limited to nonexistent. So, again, I'd be happy to speak with you about it. The other item I wanted to bring up is, on January 30th, I sent a letter to the Barnstable Town Council, and I actually sent a copy of that letter to this board, as well as the Mashpee, Falmouth, and Bourne Select Boards as well, regarding the Barnstable Town Council's advocacy for mass development to study the relocation of the Barnstable Gateway Airport to Joint Base Cape Cod. And my letter was pretty clear that I thought the town council should be soliciting outside input from the impacted communities prior to advocating for that study to be performed. And to give you the Cliff Notes version, their position was, "We're going to spend the state's money and not money of the Barnstable taxpayers. We don't want to hear airplanes anymore, and let's see if this is possible," even though, based on a variety of details, the feasibility of this from a financial perspective for the town of Barnstable is probably, makes it a non-starter. All of that being said, this past week, I saw the Falmouth Select Board has picked up on this issue, and I'm not sure if they're pursuing mass development about it or the Barnstable Town Council, but it's, it's my suggestion, my strong suggestion, that we send a letter to mass development wanting to be heard on this subject. I think that Barnstable has made a very unilateral decision. They're wasting the taxpayers' money from the state, and I think they're just, you know, they're running on a wing and a prayer here that they can get something done. Interestingly enough, when I was speaking with Mr. George earlier this evening, he was commenting to me about the access to Sandy Neck Beach and the town of Barnstable not allowing Sandwich residents to have a fee advantage, as we once did, even though the only way to get to Sandy Neck is via our road. So, that's just a little zinger for the top, but back to the primary issue, I think we should send something to them, and also, I'd be very happy to come up with some new ideas that we could advocate for that would impact the town of Barnstable, if anybody wants to put their heads together on that.
Well, may I ask you to develop a draft, and, and we'll take a look at it?
I would actually just, I, I think it might be easier if we direct the town manager to, to send something in that direction, if that's acceptable. I could create a draft, but I've actually sent one. So, I think we need to send something formal from this board.
Hello?
And I would, I would make a motion that we, we direct the town manager to send a letter to the Barnstable Town Council, actually, to mass development regarding concerns about this study of relocating the Barnstable Gateway Airport to JBCC. And, and to that end, it may just be a phone call, Bud, I'm not trying to make work for you, but we need to get engaged in this discussion before it runs away. And again, I think it's a non-starter, but the approach is unacceptable to me.
Have it on the future, like have a draft that you guys can look at?
A second, Dad.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Sampson, a second by Mr. George. All those in favor of requesting Mr. Dudham to develop a draft that the select board can review?
Aye.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, okay. And thank you, Bud.
And I'll just mention one other item, and I don't believe we have a meeting scheduled next week. Is that correct?
We do.
We do? All right, well, then, I'll save it for next week.
Okay, yes.
On the Sandy Neck issue, I've had a bunch of calls, because the price has gone up to $250, pass to go down the beach. Night stay is $40. We used to have an agreement, I think we paid half of, or whatever it was, and I've talked to Bud about it. I'd like to see if we can get that agreement back, like Dave was saying, we do maintain that road. We had that agreement years ago, and because it was not in writing, they took it away from us. So, Bud said he's going to follow up on it and see if we come up with something to benefit our taxpayers a little bit better than what we've got.
Okay? Okay. Moving on, then, to public hearing. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 138, the Sandwich Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 15th, 2025, at 7:15 PM in the, in the Sandwich Historic Town Hall Auditorium, located at 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Massachusetts, to consider the application for a new annual on-premises all alcohol liquor license for Mr. Bob's LLC at 66 State Highway Route 6A, Sandwich, Massachusetts, 02563. Joshua Cole as manager. Anyone willing, wishing to be heard on this subject will be afforded an opportunity at that time.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is open.
Joshua Cole?
Yep.
My name's Joshua Cole, opening Mr. Bob's at the old ice cream sandwich shop at 6664 Route 6A. Super excited to join the community here and bring forth the new license that the state granted the town, as one of the five new licenses. We're excited to be a casual spot, that you can come and sit on a beautiful porch, enjoy a great afternoon with community, with community, with friends, whether you're living in town, stopping on your start of your Cape Cod trip, the end of your Cape Cod trip, we want to be that place that is worth the drive, whether you live down the road or in Boston or anywhere else. But just bringing a casual, relaxed atmosphere with warm, friendly hospitality. We know the, the tradition that that space holds, and the Hanon family brought to the town of just providing a warm space that people could have a good summer job at, a good afternoon, a treat after a baseball game, whatever it was, we know that that space represents something pretty special in town, and we want to carry that torch in a new, new light and a new generation, and enjoy the license that the state's provided us, or provided the building, rather. We're looking to do this in, it's a wine bar, not the sense of a dive bar or a hard-drinking bar. As owners and operators, we certainly don't want to be involved with that, but we do value what that space holds in the community. Restaurants are certainly a major part of that, and food along with it, but we strongly feel that a nice cold beverage is, whether alcoholic or non-alcoholic, is a vehicle for conversation and friends and family, and a good snack and a nice bite to eat, as a place that the community can gather as a comfortable spot, as it's always been, and freshen it up for, for the new residents and the new people stopping by, to see that as kind of a gateway into the town as you come into 6A.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cole. From what I can see, the application is complete?
Yeah, everything came back positive, the department had, had, the department head comments had no concerns, all the background checks were supported, and everything's good.
Anybody from the public have any, any concerns or concerns that they'd like to share? Okay. Since there are none, I have a, yes, Mr. George?
Um, just some information, and I didn't see it in the packet here. A lot of times, we see that you didn't go for an entertainment license.
Correct.
Like a guitar player or something like that. So, once you get your license, get going, you might want to come back for that.
I can say we have no interest in that. We serve hospitality, I'm not a guitar player or musician, and I leave that to the experts. Play some nice music at a nice volume for the, you know, that kind of thing, but we'll leave live music to the live music venues, and we'll focus on hospitality.
Okay.
Technically, you need to have an entertainment license for piped-in music and televisions. Granted, we, we don't run around enforcing such things, but just for your information.
But in terms of live music and that stuff?
Okay.
Just one other, just the-
Right ahead.
Of the applicants that are on here, usually ask this question, but nobody's held a license previously, and nobody's had any issues with a prior liquor license in either Massachusetts or other states?
I've made a lot of other people's restaurant dreams come true, and now it's a chance for us to do our first one.
Right, well, the background check was clear, right?
Yes, yep.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, let's see.
Any further discussion among ourselves?
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approved a new annual on-premise all alcohol license for Mr. Bob's LLC, 66 Route 6A, Joshua Cole, project manager.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, best wishes for success.
Thank you for your time and consideration, we look forward to serving the community.
Thank you.
And Melissa will be in touch as the license goes through the process. Awesome.
Yep, awesome.
Okay. Next item is an application for a public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, the Sandwich Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 15th, at 2025, at 7:20 PM in the Historic Sandwich Town Hall Auditorium, located at 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Massachusetts, to consider the application for a new seasonal off-premises wine and malt liquor license for Munchymart LLC, located at 449 Route 130, Unit 4A, Sandwich, Massachusetts, 02563. David Noble is manager. Anyone wishing to be heard on the subject will be afforded an opportunity at that time. Motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you, David Noble, 30, Carmen Ave, Sandwich. The idea of the Munchymart actually came from a, a business that we already have existing there, and we had customers asking, "How come you don't sell drinks or snacks?" And I said, "We're not allowed to." And they said, "Oh, too bad." And I kept walking by an empty unit in the building and said, "That would make a nice little convenience store." The concern I've heard about possible traffic, I, I live in Sandwich, I live in Town Neck, I can tell you, none of my neighbors are driving to 449 Route 130 to buy a Coke from the convenience store. What we're doing is capturing the audience that's already coming to our building. That was the whole concept of what we're trying to do, just from the feedback we've had from the amount of customers that asked us for, to be able to shop and do something like that. So, the whole premise of what we're doing, it's a 300-square-foot convenience store, it's going to have 80% of all sales in, there will be drinks, we're going to carry snacks, we're carrying simple beach items, household items. I polled a lot of employees and said, "You went on vacation, tell me what you forgot." A toothbrush, toilet paper, paper towels, and it's going to be very simple. We'll carry the same hours that we do at the other, at the location within the building. We'll hire three to five people to manage the hours that will be open during the week. And, and the thought behind the beer and wine was to maximize the space, be able to get as much revenue as we can out of it, to make it make sense to actually operate it, because we don't want to operate a negative business, so that was the thought behind it.
That's the 300 square feet?
300 square feet.
And, and just to be clear, and I think I already know the answer on this, I'm certain that I do, but this is retail package store, it's not for consumption on the premises.
Retail package only, no consumption on premise.
Hey, I've got something. I've talked to-
I've talked to Mr. Noble before about his bags being left on the road. Okay, we kind of came to an agreement that he would maybe go out and send somebody out there once a week on the service road at 130 and try to clean it up. I had some customer ID numbers last time. We knew where those people came from that dumped the bags on the road. It was pretty good. This was last year, 2024. Again, I knew he was coming in. I've been watching the road. So, here it is again. This was from, let's see, the end of April. This one here was just yesterday, okay? Boxes from vaping and whatnot. This was out there, too. So, I've got calls from several people about what's going on with the dumping of the bags. I don't want to sing you out, basically. I know we've talked before, like you got Dunkin' Donuts, whatnot, we see the cups and whatever. But these bags are pretty visible with the bright colors. So, I recommended maybe putting numbers on the bags. That didn't happen either. So, here we are again. So, maybe, recommendation maybe would be, $3 a bag. You go to your establishment, you pay $3, you get a bag. When you come back, you have to have a bag to get the product. They're not likely to throw out the bag probably. They're going to bring it back. That's one of the recommendations. You said you were going to maybe put garbage receptacles out on the property. I went through today. I didn't see a one. Went out back to the medical dispensary. There was no garbage receptacles there. Out front, recreational, no garbage receptacles there. That may help when they come out and they want their product, they open the bag up, rip it open, they get down the road and they throw it. If it was a receptacle, they may throw it in there. So, that, that may help. I'll give you the bags. I've got the customer ID numbers on the one in end of April. I got the customer ID number, the one from yesterday. I talked to the police department about maybe issuing tickets for littering, and they said, "Hmm, it's a possibility, but we'd like to take care of it without having to go that far." So, I'll give you these. And just hopefully we can, you know, get it together and maybe we won't see so more much of this going down the road.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. George. I'd like to return to the topic of the public hearing though. And does anyone in the public have anything to say on this application? Yes, sir. Go up to the microphone, please. State your name and address and make sure the green light's on and speak into the mic, please.
I'm Warren Woods. I have the two buildings adjacent to that property. And I would like to object to that on a couple of bases. One is that where our zoning doesn't accommodate it. We're zoned as, as Ridge. And the Ridge District doesn't allow that retail, from how I can read it. I have a copy of it here. So, from that standpoint, I don't believe that it's legitimate use of that property. That building, as what were my buildings, were built as professional office space. That's what we applied to the town for permits for those buildings, and that's what we received. The medical marijuana dispensary can be viewed as a professional use of the space, I suppose. Recreational, hmm, I suppose. But certainly, putting a convenience store in that, on that site is really not what it was designed for or permitted for, and I don't think it'd be helpful to have it there, personally. This is just my opinion, and since I'm at a butter, I figured I should express it. Also, I think there's a traffic issue now, and I think that would, it would probably, or possibly contribute to increased traffic in the area. I don't know. But certainly would love to see some statistics on potential for any increased traffic. We had a problem with the dispensary. We put up signs and we put up fencing to keep people from going from our property into the dispensary. And even though I heard that it's not going to increase the number of people going in, it may not. But I can tell you right now that we have smelled people using the products, you know, when we're in our area next to, and particularly in 443 building. And so, I don't think that that's really a great idea either, people using the products when they're leaving and they're going to drive. But, you know, to have people hanging around drinking and have their munchies, and then who knows what else is going to go on in the parking lot? I would tend to think that there potentially could be issues. So, I would, if I was voting on your board, I would vote against it. That's my two cents. Thank you for listening. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say, Dr. Woods, it's been a long time. I didn't know it was you. You look the same, though.
I'm getting old, baby. I'm getting old. I don't know if I'm getting wiser. I'm just older.
Well, what's our?
Yeah, we, when we let department heads know about the application, everything was approved that apparently in that zoning district for that type of use, it's allowed by right without a special permit for the use of the retail small portion. So, there wasn't, weren't any permits even needed from the ZBA.
Anybody else of the public?
Yeah, it's B2 zoning there, and that does allow retail.
Okay, seeing that no one else in the public wants to make a comment, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay.
Yeah, one thing I'd just like to add, and I know we have a letter here from a resident concerned about traffic, and I've seen online posts about traffic. Dr. Woods talked about traffic a little bit, but we actually don't have the ability to deny a license based on traffic. That is not within our authority. So, if we do that, if we chose to do that, which we could, it's extremely likely, if not guaranteed, that the state would just override our decision, just so you know.
Okay. Make a motion. We approve the application for a new seasonal off-premises wine and malt liquor license for Munchy Mart LLC, 449 Route 130, Unit 4A. David Noble proposed manager.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Best wishes for success.
Can I just ask everyone to make sure you pull the mics a little closer to your speaking? It is a little tough to hear in the room.
Actually, the Zoom is very loud, but the mics are not in the room. I don't know about otherwise, right?
Okay. Next on our agenda is the overview of ongoing wastewater efforts, recent meetings and related issues. Town Council Attorney John Giorgio, Wastewater Coordinator Dave Mason, Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, Town Manager Bud Dunham, Wright Pierce Engineering Consultant Ed Leonard, who's participating remotely. And I, I believe that those are the only.
Yes, yep.
Right, okay. Mr. Dunham?
Yeah, so if I could just give a quick overview. If anyone here is interested, the full packets are up front. We have plenty of copies. I think if you look back for the last five years, at least annually, if not twice a year or some years, we've given you a pretty big update on our ongoing wastewater efforts, knowing that there's some big decisions that we'll have to make in the not-too-distant future, not immediately. And I think that's one thing our group wanted to stress. There's no decisions needed tonight. But we felt that there were enough substantive meetings and issues that we've been looking at, really the last two, three months, even though it's a constant effort. We felt we needed to update the board. We can update you on some conversations as recent as this morning with the two highest officials at the State Department of Environmental Protection. So, when we get to that point, I can give an update on that. But our goal was to talk about some of these bigger picture issues, some of the things that we've experienced recently at meetings and follow-up from those meetings. We have a lot of backup information in the packets. So, the thought is, we're going to keep the Zoom on the small side of the screen, and we can enlarge the pages in the packet. If any of those emails or documents or maps come up, we can bring those up so we can see them better, so help the public at home can see them. But I also want to stress that, a couple of things we want to make sure we talk about in addition to those higher-level efforts that we've had for quite a while. Maybe some up, what are the next bigger decisions that we have to think about in the next six to 12 months, I would say? Give an update on the ongoing efforts at the school wastewater treatment plants, which, you know, Dave can really highlight a lot of that work. We want to talk about the failed attempt to add the additional 1% surcharge on the WIF, and then any other issues that the board might have. If we wanted, you know, the packet could have been 300 pages. I think we got it down to just under 50. We tried to do a best of, of some of the documents that we've been working on recently and some of the issues that we've been struggling with. So, I think at that, I believe we're going to turn it over to Attorney Giorgio to go through some things. But I think we wanted to stress that between the four of us here and Ed remotely, we thought it would be almost like an open-mic night as we started to go. If some, if one of us thought there was something that was important to add or to relate to some of the items in the packet, we could easily bring that up. So, I think we'll just start talking, and then depending on what we need to pull up on the screen, we can do that.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. So, the efforts over the last few months have, have been really going down two different tracks. One track has been to secure the three parcels of land in a purchase, or I should say a sale by the bankruptcy trustee. And I'm, I'm sure Bud has informed you, but we were able to get an order of sale from the bankruptcy court. And then we proceeded to basically close on the transaction. I think as early, I don't know if it was today or yesterday, the bankrupt individual had filed a motion with the bankruptcy court to overturn the approval of the sale. And that was denied by the court as being moot. So, everything's been filed with the Registry of Deeds, and the town of Sandwich now owns those three parcels. And there was a tremendous effort, I might say, by everyone involved, including the bankruptcy trustee, to really get this done. So, that's very good news for the town because those parcels do provide an alternative, if you will, to the Joint Base Cape Cod, where you would cite both your treatment and disposal facilities basically on those three parcels and some other land that the town has up in that area. Tonight, we'll be referring to that as the in-town treatment option because it does provide a very viable alternative for the board and the town to pursue citing the wastewater facilities on those parcels of land. So, it's always nice to have options, I like to say, and that is definitely a viable option. And I'm sure Dave can, or Ed can explain, answer any questions you might have about exactly how that might look. So, the other parallel track that's been happening is we've been diligently pursuing the passage of the special legislation that town meeting approved a couple of years ago that would essentially give the town the legal option of doing a partnership with Joint Base Cape Cod and in particular, their, the entity that they've reached an agreement with called Converge to maintain and operate their wastewater treatment plant on, on the Joint Base Cape Cod property and to be able to expand that, to take in wastewater flow from Sandwich and potentially some of the other, the other towns. That legislation is, has not really advanced. And it is because, in my judgment, there's been some significant pushback, if you will, from some of the state agencies that would have to approve it. And the underlying question or problem is they, both EPA and the Clean Water Trust are taking a very narrow definition of one of the requirements, which is to be eligible for SRF funding. You need, the town, it has to be a publicly-owned treatment work. So, and we were attempting to solve that through the special legislation by essentially giving the town the right to acquire, or the authority to acquire an easement in that property, which is an interest in real property, and that we thought that that would be sufficient. The state has not yet said no, but they've raised a number of concerns and questions that has led the team to conclude that the viability of relying upon Joint Base Cape Cod as your sole option going forward is really problematic from a approval standpoint. And it would probably take a long time, even if the legislation were passed, to be able to go through all the hoops and come up with what would turn out to be an extremely complicated agreement, in my opinion, with this company, Converge, and the Air Force, and have it permissible by DEP and approval from the trust for an SRF loan. You could proceed with Joint Base Cape Cod without special legislation, but you would, you would most likely, at least, I think from a planning standpoint, I think you have to assume at this point that the, in the immediate future, relying upon Joint Base Cape Cod as your treatment and disposal option is probably not feasible. Whether we can work these details out in the future to give you another option, well, that's certainly something we would be happy to continue to work on. But for the time being, it looks to us that, from a cost standpoint, from a constructibility standpoint, that sort of bringing the in-town treatment option to the forefront is, is most likely in the best interest of the town. And I know there's a lot of material in the packet that looks at cost comparisons, and those cost comparisons are not just sort of the estimated construction cost, but also the length of time it would take to implement the various options and looking at the time value of money. It, it would appear to us, I think it's fair to say, that the in-town option would be the most cost-effective at this point. If we were to get ultimate approval for an SRF loan for the Joint Base Cape Cod option, then that would be a much more, that would be a more competitive alternative. But it's, it's not likely that that's going to occur with any, within any kind of a reasonable timeframe.
If I could just touch on some of the things that John mentioned. So, we had been interacting with the State Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, for a decade about the concept of what we're trying to. for a decade about the concept of what we're trying to accomplish at the base. And I know the board's familiar, we received three very large grants from the state to study how the four Upper Cape Towns in Barnstable could potentially work out a regional wastewater solution at the base. You know, that was all funded by the state. DEP was involved in literally dozens of meetings to try to advance things. And I think, no one's fault, I believe, we've talked many times, that the 102nd Intelligence Wing was sort of saddled with overseeing all the utilities at the base, and that's very uncommon for a National Guard or a military outfit to be, have to oversee some of those utilities. And so they had been trying to find a way to either contract out or divest of that ownership. And so eventually, it was worked out, and the ownership of both the wastewater and water system out at Joint Base Cape Cod was given to Converge, who we've been meeting with Converge for almost as long, and a lot of those meetings that I referenced with DEP, and I keep pointing on the stage, because that's where we hosted them, with the five Upper Cape Towns, EPA, DEP, Converge, you know, everyone was at these meetings, you know, all trying to work towards the common end of how we could work with each other and help address problems using Joint Base Cape Cod. Ed's company, Wright Pierce, in addition to being our wastewater consultant, was a successful engineering firm to do all three of those studies. And so a lot of those studies focused on, not the treatment, because that's fairly straightforward, but how we could deal with the treated effluent disposal. And I think that's something that, you know, ultimately, if the five towns work together, we'd be looking at about four and a half to five million gallons per day as the biggest ultimate need for all of Upper Cape Cod and the parts of Barnstable that that might be relevant for. It's pretty clear that that pinch point about effluent disposal is a very complex issue, not only because it's the base and because of PFAS contamination, but there also was a Supreme Court ruling in Hawaii that deals with if you dispose of treated effluent fairly close to public water bodies, does that make it basically an outfall pipe instead of a land-based discharge? So, very complex. We had been working, again, with, you know, Senator Moran when she was with us, and Representative Exaros throughout this, and now Senator Fernandez. And as John said, the special act that the town meeting approved back in November of 2022 was submitted. Keep trying to push it, we've been to hearings. Heather and Dave have represented us at remote hearings. It's been recommended out of the committee that it was assigned to, made it to the committee on third reading, and it never passed before the deadline, which was roughly January 1st of 2025, so it died. So it's been refiled by Representative Exaros. Senator Fernandez has met with us several times, as recently as Monday afternoon, to talk about, you know, just give me the word, and I'll file the same exact language as a Senate bill, and we'll try to push it through. And I think we felt we should talk with the board first, and also try to find out more from those state agencies before we had him do that. Couple of other things, and I'm trying to make this sequential, but it's hard because the issues jump all over. John was instrumental, once we were able to get a meeting with the State Treasurer's Office. The reason the State Treasurer's Office is important is they oversee the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, or SRF approval process. That's very attractive to towns, especially on Cape Cod. One, because if you get approval for that, it locks in a lower-interest loan, which is very important, but way more important than that. If you're on Cape Cod, if you have an SRF-approved project, you get 25% principal forgiveness from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. So it's incredibly important that whatever we do is, as much of what we do is SRF-eligible. The low-interest loans help, but it's really that 25% that really tips the scale. And so unfortunately, I would say, and I think Attorney Giorgio accurately portrayed, I didn't feel that there was a lot of support at that meeting we had. And there were probably four officials from the State Treasurer's Office, the Bond Council for the State Treasurer's Office, and I think there were two officials from DEP and the four of us. DEP was fairly quiet at that meeting, I felt. We got a follow-up email from the Deputy Treasurer, who oversees the SRF portion of their operations, and it basically admitted that this is a really hard thing for them to look at, and it seemed like the stumbling block was, you know, the base is no longer a publicly-owned treatment plant, it's now owned by a private company. And yet, even if it was still owned by the federal government, I believe they stated in that meeting that that wouldn't be a publicly-owned treatment plant, because the federal government isn't considered public for the purposes of the Massachusetts SRF approvals. So we realized we had a tough road ahead of us, and then the road became a lot harder when about a week or two later, and this is Attachment 5 in your packet, we got a follow-up email, which I'll just put on the screen, from an attorney with DEP that said, because one of the things they asked was, could we do a general overview of how we envisioned our Phase 1 implementation using the base? And so we talked about the collection and conveyance system that we would put in town, you know, that would all be SRF-eligible, big dollar amount, we still need to do the final design and permitting, several years to get to the right spot. But when we were able to seek SRF funding, our fear was, once we crossed the base boundary, then it would no longer be SRF-eligible. And so this email back to us, and there's different parts in here, says that, according to this person's opinion, it is nothing that we would do if it connected to a privately-owned treatment plant, would be SRF-eligible. So even all of our collection and conveyance system that we would do in the town boundary before we crossed the base would not be eligible for SRF, which I think, as John said, that would be a non-starter, because if we don't get the 25% principal forgiveness from the Cape and Islands Fund, it really economically makes no sense to go to the base, even though we still think there's a lot of valid reasons. It does make sense. And so right now, we're in a little bit of a conundrum, because after this, we followed up with different people to try to find out more. And when I say "me," we, I mean especially Converge. And so this morning, with like two days' notice, there was a Zoom with the Commissioner of Department of Environmental Protection, Bonnie Heiple, the Deputy Commissioner, Gary Moran, Matt Kennedy from Converge, and myself. So the four of us met this morning remotely for about a half hour. It's fair to say that the state understands the complexities of what we're dealing with. I think one thing Dave especially has pointed out to us is, you know, those nitrogen-sensitive area regulations that the Select Board was very supportive of, that the state implemented only for Cape Cod, talk about watershed agreements between towns and regional solutions to solve problems. And yet, it seems like we're not getting support to regionally solve a problem, that all these problems, even though they are regional, are going to have to be addressed one-on-one, which we don't think is right, from a bigger-picture perspective. And it's fair to say, the two lead people at DEP want to do some more follow-ups, so I don't think we're at the point where we could say, you know, we need to do this locally in town, give up the base. I don't think we're quite there yet. There's some follow-up that Deputy Commissioner Moran wants to do with the EPA. He thought within two to three weeks, he'd be able to give us better direction. Just trying to think of a couple of other bigger-picture things to update on. So we're sort of between a rock and a hard place. I think we've all felt, compared to most Cape Towns, and you guys have heard me say this ad nauseam, I mean, the public probably doesn't follow this as closely, but, you know, we, in the scheme of things, we don't have a ton of responsibility or huge parts of town that have to be addressed to solve our wastewater problem. It's a relatively small section of Sandwich, you know, 25% to 30% of our homes and businesses, but that's through all three phases of our plan, not just Phase 1. And so, you know, we just feel like, why would we build huge infrastructure for some small areas? And to put things into perspective, the total volume that we need to address at Phase 1 is about 350,000 gallons per day. That's not a big number, in the scheme of things. So I think we need to wait to hear back from the state what our options are. I think one of the things that John touched on, that we're all very nervous about, and if you take the time to look through a very complex cost analysis that Ed Leonard helped us with, you know, there's a page and a half of assumptions. I think it's fair to say, from all of our work at the base, and what was sort of funny in my call this morning, as soon as the Commissioner of DEP said JBCC, she sort of said, like, you know, that is a beast all of its own, and it is. It's, you know, there have been a number of issues environmentally out at the base that the state has had to play a lead role in getting them to address. So nothing is simple out at the base, and it's a multi-layer cake of ownership, who has to sign off on things. And I think a great example is even when they did finally sign over the ownership of the water and wastewater system, you know, that took about two years from the date they said, okay, Converge is going to get it after a competitive bid process. So it's, none of this is easy. So I think one of our fears, when we look at the numbers, which we might talk a little bit about in a big, big picture in a bit, is, you know, what's that either time value of money, or in Ed's assumptions, what we could do locally, we could probably do, you know, within eight years. Doing it at the base would probably take at least another five, by the time we could get all those bells and whistles worked out, you know? So it's hard, because I think conceptually, it makes so much sense, but, and now I feel like I'm talking in circles, but one of the things I really feel that we need to remember, I think because we don't have any embayments in our town, because our responsibilities to the South, to the three embayments we do contribute to, are fairly low, the biggest one is less than 25% of the problem, going all the way down to like 11% or 12% for the smallest one, I don't think we're under, like, anyone's microscope about, like, why hasn't Sandwich done anything? I think we can point to a lot of things we've done, including the land purchase. But at some point, we gotta step to the plate and try to accomplish and implement these actual improvements. I don't know if people think we should touch on anything else, but go ahead, John.
If I may, thanks. But the other thing that I would point out in my experience, and I've represented a lot of cities and towns on wastewater implementation plans, and the Joint Base Cape Cod, even if it was SRF-eligible, is going to be a very, very complicated agreement. And ultimately, the town will be relying upon a private entity to solve its wastewater needs. And while there are ways that you can negotiate these kinds of agreements to really build in protections, there is an element that is beyond the town's control. Whereas the in-town treatment option is a traditional method, using public land, public bonding capacity, and building a true publicly-owned treatment works plant, which gives you a lot more control over your future wastewater needs, in my opinion. So I'm not saying that should be the determining factor, but it is something we would recommend you consider as you wrestle with some of these issues.
I'm going to ask this and try not to be like Negative Nancy, but what, you know, I guess this goes to Ed and probably more to Dave and John, is that what confidence level do you guys have in what we're planning and spending money on that will fit, like, our current federal requirements and possible, you know, future ones? You know, if they change the rules on PFAS or PFAS? And then as I went through some of the literature, you know, some of the, you know, you see some of the wording in here, and, you know, like, super fund operating unit and things like that, you know, is it, are we, simply put, are we better off pumping our problems out of Sandwich? Like, so if this, you know, 20 years down the road, they say, oh my, you know, we, you know, contaminated all the water with PFAS, is, would we be more beneficial, potentially, 20 years down the road, having, you know, waited or done the extra effort to get the, you know, the pipe out to the base, because we're literally pushing, you know, I hate to say it this way, but we're giving our problem to somebody else, and then they would have to deal with it. We might have to deal with a cleanup issue, but is there a potential issue of us, you know, contaminating ourselves by pumping, you know, the effluent back down, or the treated water back into the ground here? Because we've never, you know, I don't know what other towns are doing.
Do you want to initiate that, Ed, and then I'll follow up with that?
Sure, yeah, I'll jump in on that. Is that, how's that volume-wise? My voice volume-wise, is that okay?
Oh, that's good, yep.
Okay, just try not to shout. So that is a really good question. In terms of what you have in town, obviously, you would have more control, you'd have effluent disposal within town, which is, in the sites that we are talking about, float towards the north, there are water supply wells in that vicinity, but these sites are not within the footprint of those water supply protection areas. So that's a positive, that's one of the reasons why we thought those sites were attractive. When it comes to JBCC and the premise of pumping the problem somewhere else, as, and John, Giorgio mentioned, a complicated legal agreement, there'll also be kind of a complicated permit. So each of the municipalities that connect will also be co-permittees, that's a term, co-permittees. So you would still be legally responsible for portions, for your contribution to a problem. So you don't really, it doesn't, it's not like you can wipe your hands of it. It just wouldn't be within the town proper. You know, the regulations, and just to say that, there's over 1,000 treatment plants in the United States, and each of the communities are wrestling with the same issues. So, you know, that's, regulations tend to move slowly and have long implementation plans to allow for those things to happen in the water and wastewater infrastructure construction.
I mean, my primary concern for asking that question is that we can't even get a straight answer out of the EPA, is the, you know, state or federal, as to what the requirements are going to be moving forward, or what they are today. So if we go ahead and build this whole, you know, system, I know that we had discussed, would it be, would we be in a better position than just pay to start and buy us time for everybody else to go through it and see what happens first? And if we, you know, pay a fee, or, you know, whatever the, you know, the penalty fee, whatever it is? But is there some common sense to waiting and see what everybody else goes through as well?
I just wanted to add one thing to Ed's comments. PFAS, as you've indicated, as Ed indicated, is a problem on just about every town on the Cape. If you, if you go the option of the Joint Base Cape Cod with a private operator, that very complicated agreement is going to have change in law provisions, which basically say, if there's a change in law, meaning EPA imposes more stringent requirements on PFAS removal from your wastewater, the town's going to have to pay for that. It's not going to be a competitive bid situation, it probably would be resolved in some kind of an arbitration procedure. Is it a change in law? It likely would be. And then what is the cost? What's the reasonable cost? And so, from my perspective, you may still deal with that in town, there's no question about it.
We will.
But I do think you would have better protections from cost overruns and whatnot if you weren't beholding to a private contractor who will be operating the Joint Base Cape Cod.
Because you could speak to PFAS specifically, but we're looking at contaminants of emerging concern, which could be a number of things down the road, which we would then be subject to, whether it be on the base or in the town, to addressing one way or another. We will always be subject to upgrading that plant for the best type of treatment possible.
Yeah, because if, I mean, on a certain level, like, I know that we, you know, we have to address this in some shape or fashion, you know, but sometimes you get the feeling like they're pushing us to do it as fast as possible, but at the back end, they're saying, you know, we know that this is going to be a problem, you know? So it's because we can't get them to admit what the regulation's going to be, or give us guidance towards it, and then, but yet, at the same time, they're shoving you forward.
At the same time, you know, I look at where Sandwich has been in this process for the number of years we've been involved, and if you, you know, we have learned from others, you know, we're not leading it, but at the same time, we have the advantage of learning from what others are encountering. But at the same time, we have the advantage of learning from what others are encountering as they move forward. So we've been in a good position at this point, and I don't feel like we've been pushed. I feel like we're pushing ourselves to address potentially the issues and to make situations better. If, you know, we could speak to phase one of the needs that are coming in this community that are driving the, you know, the need for it.
The only hard part about waiting is costs continue to go up, but that's a fact of life. And it's fair to say with wastewater especially, I think since COVID, prices have really multiplied.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think, I think one of the things that I stressed on the remote meeting this morning is like, you know, we're all adults. Like if the answer is no, please tell us as soon as you possibly can, because we need to get moving. I think one of the things that we could probably ask the board to do, I would hope by, you know, late summer, early fall is we should talk with Ed and try to figure out what that contract would, would need for like designing, you know, and permitting a collection and conveyance system. And that, you know, that won't happen overnight, all that work. There's a lot of work that goes into it. But that's something that I believe, and John, I was hoping I could talk to you before the meeting, but I'm pretty sure this is right, so correct me. I'm pretty sure that with our WIF money that we're bringing in now, we'd have enough cash flow while that work was being done to pay for those expenses from the WIF. But we wouldn't have enough money in the WIF contract to be able to, in, in the WIF account to sign the contract, to do the conveyance on the likely cost of a conveyance and collection system. We would probably need a town meeting vote that would authorize us to be able to borrow. I know Bill Jennings well enough, we wouldn't issue debt for this. We'd probably do like short-term bans and just pay them off as we went at very low rates, but we do need that authority in order to sign that contract. And I think one of the things we should talk about later in the night is that 1% that we did not get, the extra 1%, and I think people will quickly see why it's going to start costing more than if we were just paying the 1%. Because we're going to have to ask sooner for a lot more for, for some of these funds to get this required work done.
And we have to keep in mind relative to that conveyance system also, in order to ever do anything with it, you know, for SRF funding, we need to have a disposal, treatment and disposal location identified at some point in time.
Just wanted to add, we've talked a lot about the pressures from DEP on the NSAs and, and meeting the nitrogen standards and embayments. One of the major decision points that this town made when it adopted its CWRMP is that the first phase really focuses more on the village and the town neck beach area, which have constrained properties and environmental issues that are not related to NSA. So if you choose not to move forward, you basically adopt the existing conditions for those areas. So that's a big, you know, part of the thought process for all of us.
I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about numbers, like I will cringe because if I get a call from Taylor tomorrow saying like, okay, why is this number? And I couldn't explain it. It's, it's extremely complex. These are super high level estimates. But if you look at, you know, what Ed put together, which, you know, we're just trying to get a in the ballpark number. You know, you'll quickly see that without that SRF support, the cost is more than we can afford. And we need to do something locally instead of working with the base. I want to stress that I think we'll always be working with our neighbors and the base in phases two and three. Again, no decision's been made on phase one, but like depending on what we hear back from the state. You know, it could be a decision's been made for us, so. I don't know what you'd like to go through right now or what.
Is Barnstable still planning on going to the base regardless?
No, Barnstable wants to totally do it on their own is what they're trying. Mashpee is mostly doing it on their own. I think they had one segment of their town that the base was an alternative further down the road, and I think they understand some of the constraints working with the base. And so they're probably looking at doing it on their own. We did at a recent meeting Dave and I were at, asked Mashpee because especially along, you know, Pimlico Pond Road and other areas, like the, the boundaries go back and forth. There's some areas we want to work with them to address. They're actually looking at a package treatment plant and one of the parts along Mashpee Wakeby Lake that would cross over into Sandwich and some Sandwich properties could hook into that. And we would help, probably that's one of those nitrogen credit trading examples that you were given, Shane, that we might be cheaper for us to help pay for those improvements than for us to install something there ourselves. But when we asked, do you guys see any capacity that we could send your way? And they have the problem that a lot of where they dispose of the effluent, it affects the mounding of where the water gets, goes in, in, and there's wetlands near there. Now, we're really fortunate because the areas we're looking at, no wetlands, very high depths of groundwater. So, you know, we're, we're ahead of the game in many respects. So short answer was Mashpee doesn't think they can afford to take any of our effluent.
But at the same time, as far as the future, let's say with Falmouth and Barnstable, by example, they, they are pursuing other options. Those options haven't, you know, they're in the process of requesting approval or submitting for approval. The outcome of that will determine what direction they are ultimately going. I think they're probably, you know, in Barnstable's case, looking, it's more cost effective to look at how they can handle it within, within the town, you know, if that's approvable. If it's not, there are other options available.
And I think Falmouth's been very vocal. They're trying to permit an ocean outfall and for a singular town to be able to do that, I don't think that's ever been approved. So it'll be interesting to see what happens. And if that doesn't get approved, it's going to be, I think they're going to be really, they're going to be hard pressed to try to find a way to, you know, they have 14 embayments. And where would they go? And maybe they pump north and heading towards the base. Like that's why, you know, it could all, phase one could look different than what the long term is. It seems like we've been talking about this forever, and yet we still can't give you black and white advice on, on what to do yet.
And I, I need to state the obvious too, because it may be people in the public wondering why we've been pursuing JBCC for so long. And just, you know, it was mentioned, as far as John had mentioned, having options, the option didn't become available until January to have another type of discussion as far as how we could handle our wastewater. And at the same time, for all the years we've been meeting with DEP and the EPA, you know, the, these discussions have been on the table and we have not, during that timeframe for all those years, never heard the issue of what was SRF eligible and what was not? When we had everything on the table with our intentions.
I just, just to add something here, but the JBCC situation just seems like a hot potato to me, right? It's like they have all of these challenges figuring out where lines of jurisdiction start and stop with all these different agencies. I see right of way issues. I see concerns about the operation of that plant out there and if that private entity becomes insolvent. If there's issues with the plant, who fixes it? I, I see us potentially spending a lot of time waiting for something that could go wrong a million different ways. And, and we've been, we've been talking about this for years. We were talking about this when I, during my previous tenure here. But it, it's, looks like it's getting less likely and more challenging than, than we expected it to be obviously, right? We, our expectations were something different, which is why we pursued this plan and kept it on the table for so long, but I,
And it was, and not to interrupt Ed, but and it was the only option because this disposal, you know, the acreage needed for disposal, we did not have.
Right, right. And we've solved that problem.
Yes.
And the PFAS issue is more on the base than, than anyplace else, right?
Well, it's something we'd have to deal with also because it's common with all, you know, in all waste disposal regardless of. If we build in town, we would have to deal with it. But yes, I mean, they have, they have years of contamination associated there.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the emerging contaminant issue is probably potentially the bigger item over time.
Again, no decisions needed tonight. It, it does seem like based on a couple of the meetings and exchanges that we've had over the last two or three months, things might be getting a little bit clearer. So I would say as we get a little bit more clarity, then we'd be able to give you better direction and, you know, we're always willing to come back in and give you an update. And I, I think there is a lot of work that we could start doing. We will probably need a town meeting vote, I would think, to authorize that contract. Cause if we're, we wouldn't need a ballot vote because it's enough money will be rolling in where we can fund that work. But we can't pay for it in cash upfront where I could sign a contract, so.
There's also the ability to do the hydro geologic engineering report for the land we've acquired also at the same time, because there's a value to that, to, to initiate that. And at the same time, once the final decision's made, we'd have to update the CWRMP also. So there's work that, you know, is forthcoming.
That, that engineering that you just mentioned, that basically validates the land's ability to deal with the effluent?
That is correct. You know, we have preliminary test holes that had been down out in the area and other parcels of land that the town had set aside for wastewater. It would have to be done on this, you know, geologically. Pretty good, comfortable saying it would be the same, but that work would have to be done.
And I would just add on that, that no permit for effluent discharge is a slam dunk. The site looks better than any site I've seen. It's in a high, high groundwater level. It's, you know, far away from coastal resources, but it will still be a very significant effort to obtain a permit for effluent disposal.
Yep.
Always is. So that will be a long process and the sooner we can start that, the better.
And just add another wrinkle, like, you know, this is what it is. It's a, you know, that's not a map for natural heritage endangered species. So we have to address all that as well. So I mean, there's a lot of technical work we need to do before we start spending a lot of, well, we need to spend money on that first before we can spend the real money on design and construction, but.
Probably find out if it's illegal to be grounded.
I think it'd be smart for us to wait to see what we hear back from today from DEP. Maybe crystallize a little bit our numbers because it's, it's very confusing. A four chart on diff, you know, columns on different type solutions. We could probably boil it down to one or two at that point and then show you that. Heather did a great job. The last page of your packet is a spreadsheet of trying to summarize the, you know, more complex data before it. I think I've read the Ed's excellent four-page report like three times and I'm still, I'm still struggling. But it's, it's really.
There's a lot in the four pages, but I mean, the takeaways you have covered well in this discussion. It's the JBCC options are definitely complicated. You guys have all touched on it. We've always, we, we thought we could see through the fog many times over the years and it just keeps clouding back in. The Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund and that 25% principal forgiveness is a, is a big deal. Because that wasn't on the table at the beginning of all these discussions, eight, 10 years ago. It came into the discussions and that's why that eligibility is really so important. The JBCC solution does on paper look like the lowest capital cost solution. But with that grant principal forgiveness being part of the equation, when you, when you have that in the mix, that in-town option becomes more attractive as if items on JBCC become ineligible. And then the time cost of money piece, you know, it's the longer things take inflation. Inflation tends to go up faster than the municipal investment rate. So that's the other pieces is really to keep track of. Those are the major takeaways.
And just to show the, all the issues that we're talking about isn't just Sandwich. So I'm on that Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Board. And so I think there were 12 different Cape projects that were approved on the most recent SRF, but some of those were limited in terms of how much could be paid each year from the SRF financing because their funding is getting tight, partially because the Cape is now under the gun to do all these, to address these nitrogen sensitive area regulations. You know, Yarmouth and Dennis just approved, you know, $250,000 plus portions of their phase one. You know, there's a lot of work that's going to be happening on Cape Cod. So a lot of that bandwidth of money is being taken up. And then there was an email this morning from one of the county commissioners that said that they had heard from their federal sources that the proposed budget for the Federal Clean Water Trust program was going to be, proposed to be cut by 90%. So if that happens, you know, it's not like the state revolving fund is going to be giving out a bunch of money. And so on the remote meeting this morning, I said, what would really help us collectively is if you could vote? And this would help us in Sandwich especially, like could you change the law for the SRF? Just as it relates to the Cape and Islands that if, if you're eligible or if you're approved for SRF, even if the state doesn't commit to giving you any money, at least by that approval, it would give us the ability to go after the 25%. And so I think that's something that Commissioner Moran had already thought about and they were, they've already been talking about it internally. Because if their funding from the feds gets caught, cut substantially, you know, things could come to a grinding halt if there's not a way out for us to access that 25% across the Cape, not just Sandwich. So, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of big issues that we're dealing with.
And just for, I mean, for people at home, I mean, it's, you know, 20, you're talking 25% of $200 million, you're talking $50 million. So it's not, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, you're talking, you know, like.
Tens of millions, easy. Yeah, yep.
Or more.
Yeah. There are, there are some good news, so it might be a good transition for Dave to highlight the work at the schools.
Well, I'll get to the schools, but meanwhile, we're still working on the watershed permits with Barnstable, Mashpee and Falmouth for those southern estuaries. We're working with SMass now to update our flows for Barnstable, looking at the nutrient trading, and we're still working with Mashpee and, and as I said, Falmouth to develop our watershed permits in those areas to, for our response, percent of responsibility. So that is ongoing efforts. With regards to the schools specifically, the, the schools were within the comprehensive plan also. The high school, the contract for the updating upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant there, the contract was issued to Weston Sampson. The intention was to get that work done this summer. There's some time delays associated with purchase of materials due to availability and demand with those. We're working on that now. And some of that material, we're looking at pre-purchasing also at current rates. So we're working with that. So the, some of the work will begin this summer. We've reached out to the, the school administration. They're aware of the timing of this. So they've been kept in the loop relative to the work that's, will be initiated out there. And then as far as the Oak Ridge School and the Forestale School, the end of the month, we'll have 90% of the engineering design completed for the transition of those, those wastewater treatment plants to Title V systems. Because DEP approved the waiver to allow them to be converted to Title V. There's some construction that needs to be done on that. Those plans are being finalized the end of this month. We'll put those out to bid and that work will be initiated to complete those projects also.
What's the completion time for those projects? Like when do they, okay, it's 100%?
Well, with the Oak Ridge School and Forestale School, like I said, we'll have the design plans. They're basically putting in an additional tank bypassing the treatment plant that's there and connecting the piping and some electrical work there associated with that. That's something that could be done by the end of the summer. It's done by typically just even a license installer within the, within the town that has that capacity specifically to handle a 16,000 gallon tank. But it's the same at both schools.
What about the high school?
The high school, again, some of the work will be this summer with the, the rest of it going through the, the year. Only because of the availability of equipment there.
Yeah, we were told there's a, on some of the equipment, there's a 40-week backlog. So that's 10 months. So, or nine months. So we did reach out to the Department of Revenue Attorney of the Day and they clearly said, you cannot prepay for a piece of equipment.
Okay, sorry.
That's dead, we just found out today. That's dead in the water.
Okay.
And so the important thing on all that work, everyone needs to remember is we do have cash in hand from the WIF and appropriations from town meetings. So we can get all three of those projects done. Just so the board's aware, and I'm sorry, Dave, we haven't talked today. We did reach out to Barnstable County. The attorney for the Department of Revenue said a lot of towns are concerned about their unspent ARPA funds. And if we can't spend those funds because we're waiting for the equipment to arrive, see if there's a related project that you could sort of credit back to use those funds right away. So they can't be taken back. And where we have enough money in the WIF, we could then backfill for the expenses for the high school. So that's something that the county is going to have to, we're going to have to talk with their. They hired in a private. They hired a private accounting firm to oversee their ARPA funds. So we have to have a meeting with them to try to get the okay to do it. But I think that could be successful. And just in terms of the component of spending the county ARPA money as quickly as we could for wastewater purposes, we should be able to do that. It's just, the high school's probably going to take a while.
We'd be looking at final completion of, you know, the summer of 2026 based on the timing.
And the high school, that's the long-term solution, right? Once that's fixed, that's going to be the.
That is correct.
So, so what is the oversight and the accountability for the operation of that facility once it's up and running, right? And I asked the question because I know that there's been like back and forth on all sorts of different issues with that plant.
We've recommended to the school and I think they're open to is like that. You know, we should issue an RFP to have a private firm oversee the operation of that facility and do all the maintenance and operation. And, you know, if the school can't pay for that cost and it has to come to the town, we'll probably use part of our WIF proceeds to pay, pay those bills.
I just think we'd be better served to have it handled properly than to have, you know, further capital costs based on equipment failures.
Exactly, 100%.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to add, to pile on to the, the downer portion of this discussion, but I do feel duty bound to let you know what, what I'm seeing in the, in the public procurement sector. One of which is, there are, there's a very big unknown in terms of cost. And that is what are the impacts of the tariffs that are being imposed? When you're, when you're, you know, purchasing lumber, steel and whatever. I, I have one project right now that we've been working on where they've added $5 million to the budget just to address what they think the tariffs are going to be. So, so that makes Ed's job particularly difficult in, in terms of cost estimating. And then the other thing that's happening, and I think we all need to understand this, is just in the past couple of weeks, we are receiving grant agreements from the federal government that are requiring that the town certify that they have no DEI, you know, diversity, equity and inclusion. Those are in the grant agreements that are now coming forward. So that's a whole nother issue that on a big project like this, you're going to have to deal with. That's just the way it is.
So we really want you to do this, but we're going to make it as hard as possible. Dave Mason will never retire.
Yeah, then just, I would just add, and maybe John can help clarify legally, but where the special town meeting in January supported the 1% sur, excuse me, surcharge on the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund going from 2% to 3%. But at the ballot, that was denied or turned down at a little bit more than, actually two, one week ago. And so in light of that, I think we tried to do our best to educate people that, you know, if, if that went, if that was approved, we'd be bringing in money more consistently. And it would end up costing people far less than if we had to issue debt more often or ask them for bigger things that state and federal regulatory agencies were requiring of us. And I think that's one thing, I don't know if we wanted to talk about now, but, you know, if, what's hard is like, we're trying to save people money and I know they said no, and you want to honor what the people said. Personally, part of me says like, do people understand, do they, you know, did they hear that this is going to save them money in the long run? If you asked again, what would that process be? Because I think you'd have to get another town meeting vote followed by a special election at least 45 days after that. So that, that would be considered. But if you don't, then we just need to tell people like, hey, we're going to have to come back a lot sooner. You know, because the WIF is not going to have enough money to probably fund much more than what we're already have going with the schools, the collection and conveyance system. And then hopefully the work on permitting and designing the plant and the effluent. We're going to have to stagger those because we wouldn't have enough to do them all at once. But once you paid for those two things, I don't think there's going to be much WIF for many, many years.
And ultimately, as it was said, it's going to cost more because of that.
I mean, that's a hard policy decision based on a vote that's been taken already.
Counselor, you going to share a thought? Was that about to share a thought?
Well, I was just going to follow up on what Bud said about revoting the WIF. The earliest that you could do that, because the, the ballot vote has to occur at either an annual town meeting or at a state election. So it would be a year from now before you could do the vote again, the ballot vote again. Which means you would have to call a special town meeting to have the town meeting piece. And that's actually 60 days before the election. So you, you could put that off and have the town meeting vote at next year's annual town meeting. And I do believe there's a state election the following November, would be November of '26. So you could have the ballot question on the state, at the state election. If that makes sense.
Or if there was a special in November, we could put it on.
A special town meeting in November, you could put it on again. If you secure the, the vote at town meeting, then you could put it on the ballot for the '26 annual election in May.
Yeah, I, I think some of the challenges there are that there's very little appetite for what appears to be spending, right? So folks are instinctively going to vote no. The other piece there, I think, is that there is a fair amount of misinformation distributed by people that were opposed to what appeared to be a tax increase and they went out of their way to spread that misinformation. And people didn't understand exactly what they were voting for and what that meant in the bigger picture. And that's just going to be the simplified version of what I'm going to say because it could get quite extensive. But I just think it's going to be a tough sell. I don't think it's, I, I think it's the right thing to do for everybody's long-term benefit. There's no question about that. I, I just think it's going to be tough to get it over.
Yeah, we've seen that the arithmetic works out.
Yeah, yep.
Anecdotally, I'll tell you that, I don't know if you've spoken to the town administrator in Dennis, but they had a similar increase. They, they went from one to 3% and that passed this past Tuesday.
Nice.
It's hard to, it's hard to predict these things.
They're also in the middle of a project. There's a specific project that they're working towards. We're, we're still in decision-making.
Yep.
That makes it, I think, a little bit more difficult for the public to vote for something that's yet to be really formed up.
That's right.
I think it's also important to point out that, you know, when we bring these things forward and we're saying that this is the most cost-effective way to move forward, is that none of us, you know, three, five, 10 years down the road want to have that I told you so moment. Because at a certain point, when we start putting pipes in the ground, we need to start paying for that or need to start ordering equipment. And there's not enough funds in the account. That's when we go to town meeting and say, we have to do this and, you know, and we told you so. And that, that's an awful feeling from our seat. It's not something that we want to do. And then when we put these things forward to the voters, you know, we are trying to look five, 10, 20, 30 years down the road to say, if you put it away now, you know, compound interest money today is worth, you know, more than it is tomorrow. That's what we're trying to accomplish here. And yes, there are other projects that are coming and, you know, things are tight. I, you know, I fully understand that as, you know, somebody that's self-employed. You know, but this is something that, you know, I'd rather pay 200 bucks a year this year than having to come back and have a giant bill and say that we're halfway through this project and we now have to do this. It's not, we want to do it, we have to do it. And to your point, people are asking for long-term planning.
Right.
Which is what this is.
Right.
Being physically responsible for long-term.
And the basis of Phase One that we're working on, if you go back in the years, whereas when the town and the people in the town, the long-range plan wanted a level of economic development. And so Phase One targeted those areas also to provide for that. If you go back in time when we were trying to sell, we'll refer to it as the golden triangle. You know, the, the block, the stop was, it needed wastewater. So this, this, this all plays together and why we were looking at Phase One and those who sat on the committee at that time identified this area as Phase One to bring those long-range plans of needs to the town. The finances does the same thing.
You know, without doubt, if, if your hook, if your property is hooked up to a sewer system, you can do more with your property than if you were hooked up to a septic system.
Absolutely.
Your, your values that you can generate from your property go up. I know if Matt Kennedy was here, like, you know, he had other commitments tonight, but he totally understands that if, if that collection and conveyance system is not SRF eligible or if it will take too long to resolve, there's, we don't really have a choice. But I think we all see, you know, don't forget the CWRMP looks at like a 50-year snapshot. I mean, in 20 years, all the, all five towns, Upper Cape Towns, Barnstable and JBC may be trying to do the same exact things.
But do you see an issue with the SRF fund? You know, like, how is, and this is a question more for, you know, people at home, like, how that's funded? And if they lose, you know, that federal funding, is there a chance that these SRF funds could go away?
Yeah, I think they would have to look at, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but they would probably look at, I don't know, they probably couldn't pay the difference to hold down the debt. You know, if you're not doing any growth or additional development, you're looking at 2.4%, I believe, for low-interest loans. You know, five years ago, we were borrowing for less than that. So it really didn't make much sense. But now interest rates are much, much higher. So it would help. So, yeah. I think if, obviously if their funding gets cut, they're approving less each year, which sort of goes back to what Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner Moran was saying. They may have to find a way to like certify projects, but not give you any money. Just so, you know, like, we can get the Cape and Islands Fund money. And, and that's not going to, you know, there's other towns that are moving way, way faster than us for much, much bigger projects than we're going to have to implement. So they're grabbing that money now. Like, don't, don't fool ourselves. Like, we are way behind compared to others. And as Dave said, there's good reasons why we're behind. We're learning more by being behind. Hopefully we'll benefit from some other things, but, you know, people are grabbing hundreds of millions of that money regularly. Over the course of all their project, you know, not in one fell sweep.
And it might not be there when we need it.
Yeah. It should be based on all the projections. But we actually have a Zoom on June 2nd with the commission staff to like, try to update our estimates. Because some of what they're getting from other towns are like way higher than what they thought they would get.
Right. The, the SRF program in Massachusetts has, has been competitive for over 20 years. And they don't have enough money to fund all the projects and needs that are out there. So they do have a priority system that communities go through and kind of sell their projects and identify the pluses to the communities. And, you know, that's how they're ranked and that's how principal, when there's money, there's some principal forgiveness directly from the SRF program. That helps also get them on the rankings for, for other programs as well. So, you know, the, the cuts that we've been hearing about as well to the 2026 budget, we're, we're hearing about it as well. So that can, will have some fairly dramatic impact if, if they cut it 90%, like Bud said. I haven't heard a specific number, but it's, it will make a big difference.
Ed, can I ask a weird one? This probably isn't fair. If, um, like, say, say we know what we need to do. We design and permit, you know, get all the permit approvals for what we need to implement. We ask the voters for $100 million to help implement that. And they say no, and say no a couple of times. And then hypothetically, if, you know, we get sued by the Conservation Law Foundation or EPA like the Cape was before, what would be our option? Like, could, could we make anyone in, that contributes to impaired embankment go to a innovative alternative septic solu, solution even though it doesn't work? Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I don't know what else we'd be able to do. And the cost for that is way more than what bonding would be to implement.
The issue would be if we made them go in that direction or we were forced to have them go in that direction, the results wouldn't, it wouldn't show what's necessary to reduce the total maximum daily load. So it would still be, would still be non-compliant.
Do more, yeah.
If I, if I may, Bud, under your scenario, if the town winds up in violation of the Federal Clean Water Act or the Massachusetts Clean Waters Act, what I have seen happen is the town gets sued by the federal government or the state. And they will impose a remedy that you're going to have to pay for whether or not you have funding or not. That's, that's been the typical approach in the past. So what would happen is we would have to negotiate a consent decree that had a time, a timeframe and a schedule for coming into compliance.
I mean, thankfully, most of the Cape towns have been very successful getting those votes.
And by, by the way, I, I'm sorry. That consent decree will include civil penalties of up to like $28,000 a day.
Yep.
Per violation.
Yep.
So if they were so inclined, the, the federal government could make, take very draconian steps to force you into compliance.
This is why we continue to bring it before you.
Now, I'm guessing that in the 60s and 70s, you just build a plant and a collection system and start discharging effluent and it was probably a lot easier.
Yep.
Easy answer.
The spec, the spec books were a lot smaller. They said, build me a good plant.
I've, I've said this before, it was in a, in a memo by Gene Carr, former selectman. They didn't do it in the 60s. They didn't do it in the 70s. Will they do it in the 80s? When will it happen? And that was speaking to wastewater and that was back in the 70s.
So I would guess we'll have to come back to you, oh, obviously if we get a black and white answer from the state or federal government, we'll come back as quickly as, as we reasonably can. But if not, I would think late summer, early fall, we may float the idea of getting a rough idea from Ed about a conveyance collection system, full design, cost and permitting. And we should find out what that amount is. And if we have a special in the fall, we should get a vote to, you know, pay it from the WIF. But we do need a vote to borrow from the WIF to be able to pay for that.
I just have one last question and this is really for John. John, on the, on the timeline that we're on, and Dave, I guess this is for you as well, and Ed, I guess it's for everybody, is we have years on here like 2033, 2038 for when the system would go online. Do you, is that consistent with us not having to get in the litigation? Is that something that we're, at the pace that we're going is an acceptable pace? There's a no-risk pace that we're at right now?
I, I, Shane, I don't think the EPA or DEP would come after the town if you had a, a plan and there was progress being made. And those timelines, while they sound long, they're, you know, that's just how long it takes. You, you get yourself into trouble when you do nothing. That's been my experience.
I don't even think there's an opportunity for an accelerator.
No.
Right? Like, what else would, could we do?
Right. I mean, we have a lot of, if someone came tomorrow and asked us, what have you guys done? We have. done? We have a lot of stuff to show them.
Yeah.
So we'll do this one?
I would say, like, as soon as we get better clarity from the state and federal, and/or federal government, but even if we don't, I would think we would want to come back to you late summer, early fall, whenever we have a special, because we may want an article on there to authorize us to be able to, you know, borrow from our WIF funds to be able to proceed with a lot, those two things that are, at least one of them, A and B, that are on that list about the conveyance and collection system and the...
Hydrogeologic study.
Yep. Thank you. That was the point of the question. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you as well. Have a good evening.
Sorry, two seconds while we close a few things.
Sure.
No wastewater jokes either.
Man, I was biting my tongue. The dead joke.
Good night, Counselor. Good night, Dave. Thanks very much.
Sorry, we still haven't found a way to make that easy to explain.
Okay. Old business, town meeting recap?
Yeah, so just, you know, thank the public for coming out, and especially for approving the budget. So all the departments are able to open their doors on July first. I think just quickly looking down the list of warrant articles, everything passed with the exception of the short-term rental bylaw that was indefinitely postponed. I want to stress again, and this was made clear several times at town meeting, that the requirement for short-term rentals to register with the towns and to be inspected once annually is still in effect. That was from a state requirement. That was not part of the vote that was delayed at town meeting. And so, you know, we just hired a short-term rental inspector. And, you know, we basically have to inspect over seven-hundred short-term rentals by the end of the calendar year, focusing on life safety issues like smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, proper means of egress. So things like that. We're not looking to redo someone's building per, you know, permit for their house or certificate of occupancy. It's just focusing on those safety laws. And then the petitions, I believe, were both indefinitely postponed as well. Actually, the first one was turned down, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The second one was indefinitely postponed. And then, then the results, yeah, they might have been. I don't, yeah. And then the ballot question we already talked about.
Yep. Okay. Select board meeting schedule?
Yeah, this was the updated one, I thought, where Dave was, first meeting, just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page about what the planned schedule is. Obviously, if a special meeting is needed, we can do it within forty-eight hours' notice. Or if a meeting isn't needed, we can cancel it at any time.
Okay. Under old business, other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I have none at this point. New business, select board liaison assignments. Does everybody have their, their copy?
I could just make a recommendation. I don't think, the Gulf Advisory Committee has not met. We're going to recommend that you get rid of the committee when you do the committee assignments in, in June. So I don't think we need a liaison there.
School committee and...
Wait, we gotta, we gotta do, we had, Mike is still on here.
Got a...
Or two of them.
Yeah, if it makes us simpler, I'm very happy to do cemetery commissioners, which I did during my previous service, as well as the winter road committee. So if you're being static otherwise, that is maybe a simple path.
Yep. That's good. Fill this spot in.
DPW's done a lot of work on some cemetery issues and wants to have a meeting fairly soon on some substantive things.
Gulf Advisory is out. Cemetery commissioners, we've addressed.
Yep.
School committee and school negotiation liaison. I could keep it, but sometimes I get a little concerned about perspective, you know. An accumulation of knowledge, okay. But they just got done with, the, the school department just got done with the strategic plan for the next five years. And I think I did it once on FinCom as well. But I did the five-year plan with Dr. Gould, too. That, you, you know, maybe it's just time for a change of perspective. I'll do it, but I'm, I'm open to a suggestion.
I can, I mean, I'll stay on there as well, Charlie, if you want to. Do we need one or two people on there, do you think?
Actually, it's always nice to have a backup.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes. Sorry. I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, he's not here, but a community preservation committee, I...
Patrick's very passionate about that.
Yes, that's a good one.
That's, that's where my head was going.
The winter road.
Thank you. The senior management board, what do they...
I say, I, I didn't really exist because I was that for six years, and I did nothing.
What do they do, Bob?
It's basically when, when he can't go, I was supposed to go. He's gone to the law, so.
Yeah, the senior management board, you're right, doesn't meet very often.
I think they used to.
Yeah, I don't...
I mean, we've gone to a couple of them, but not within the last couple of years.
All right. You want to X that one, too?
Why don't we leave it just in case?
Okay.
Oh, I mean.
Okay. A council on aging, you're...
Yeah, I got that.
You're still fine with that? Okay. Winter road management, appeal committee. Are there good choices? Are, are we going to replace...
Mike with Dave?
Yeah, Dave's going to do that.
Yeah, he's going to take that.
I love winter road managers. Everybody knows that. That's right. On every level.
Bikeway and pedestrian, unless somebody else has a, a strong interest, you know, there. They're productive. Nice folks to work with. A commission on disability.
I'll stick with it.
Okay. Okay, so there we have it, I guess. Do we need a motion to...
No, that's good. Yeah.
We discussed it, and there it is. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by, by the chairman. I, I, I have a question, being that it's coming up. The Memorial Day Parade, where are we in making contact with the, with the Legion or whomever? Have, have they reached out to us? Has, has Frank, not to rope Franken, but has Frank...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything yet. I'll check with Frank, though.
Okay.
So that was my, my last update that I did not provide earlier. So I will be serving as the master of ceremonies for the parade again this year. So parade is planned to commence as scheduled, departing the lab at ten AM. We will march to Main Street and Jarvis Street for the reading there. Down Main Street, River Street to Tupper. We'll stop for the memorial services at the square here, and then proceed to the library for the regular ceremonies and speeches. So that is the plan. So there, there won't be speeches here at the square this year. Last year, we had that sign reveal taking place.
Right.
So we'll stop here for the laying of wreaths and the twenty-one ton salute. And then we will proceed to the library for the regular program.
Okay. Again, this could be just, and Charlie said, I thought we had ceased to stop at Jarvis.
Last year, we made a modification, and we stopped at Jarvis on the way out.
Oh, yeah.
As opposed to on the way back.
Oh, okay.
So we, we flipped that over. Because what's generally happened is after the main program at the library, folks tend to disperse. So we flipped that last year. We stopped at Jarvis on the way out, and that actually worked very well. And folks kind of followed the parade route from that location forward.
Okay.
And I talked to Chief Keen, he's, he's aware of what we're doing, generally speaking. So we're expecting to have a very nice event, and there's been a good amount of effort put into it by a few folks to, to make sure things come together.
Okay. So you're involved, and Bishop McFarland is involved as well? Frank?
Actually, I...
McDonald, sorry.
Actually, he has not, Frank has not been involved in this, actually. But Commander Torbell and another bunch of people.
Oh, okay.
And Representative Exaros and Senator Fernandez will be attending as well.
Okay. Other matters not reasonably anticipa, I, I have done then, at this point. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Public comment? Anybody else for public comment?
No.
Okay. Closing remarks?
I'm good.
I would just like to maintain my, please be reminded to unite in prayer, meditation, and reflection in devotion to peace, justice, and worldwide moral renewal. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting will be Thursday, May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, here in Historic Town Hall at seven PM. Enjoy your evenings and stay safe.